Sophie?
Caleb Brown will lead us in the pledge. Caleb is a junior at Pecosin High School. He is involved in DECA and regularly active in sports, including lacrosse, basketball, and soccer. Caleb is an active volunteer with Coastal Community Church, helping at their food drives, and volunteers with the Peninsula Rescue Mission. After high school, he wants to join the Two and Two program at Thomas Nelson and Virginia Tech, majoring in business.
Thank you. Will you all rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alexis Southall will provide the inspirational reading. Alexis is a junior at Pecosin High School. She is a member of the Harmonettes, the all-female chorus, and is a roadie for Soundstation. Alexis is active at PHS and is involved in key club, student-to-student mentor program, and competition drama team. Last year, she went to Jacksonville, Florida on a mission trip with Tabernacle Methodist Church. After high school, Alexis would like to major in psychology at James Madison University.
Good evening. I'll be reading two poems. The first one is titled "Do Not Quit" by author unknown. When things go wrong, as they sometimes will, when the road you're trudging seems all uphill, when the funds are low and the debts are high, and you want to smile but have to sigh, when care is pressing you down a bit, rest if you must, but do not quit. Success is failure turned inside out, the silver tint of the clouds of doubt, and you can never tell how close you are, it may be near when it seems so far. So stick to the fight when your hardest hit, it's when things go wrong that you must not quit. The next poem I'll be reading is "You Can Be Whatever You Want to Be" by Donna Levine. There is inside you all of the potential to be whatever you want to be, all of the energy to do whatever you want to do. Imagine yourself as you would like to be, doing what you want to do, and each day take one step towards your dream. And though at times it may seem too difficult to continue, hold on to your dream. One morning you will awake to find that you were the person you dreamed of, doing the thing that you wanted to do, simply because you had the courage to believe in your potential and hold on to your dream.
Thanks to both of you. Next up, our student presentation. Students from, the presentation night students will be telling us about Mr. Marcus Nieves' experiential learning class, and they include Bryce Hinton, Kate Lombardi, Kirsten Menino, Blair Silver, Leslie Spate, George Ziegler, and Kayla Zoldork.
Hi, my name is George Ziegler, and I'm here today to talk about experiential learning, which is a class at Pecosin High School, in which we are all enrolled in, where we work 140 hours at an internship, where we shadow a professional in a career we're interested in. We have to get 140 hours throughout the school year, which is, seems like a lot, but it's not too much. And we get hands-on experience in a career we're interested in, so we can see further in depth to see if we want to further pursue this career. We meet monthly, and we use the Socratic method and discuss what we've done in the previous month, and we discuss assignments, and we learn from each other. I personally have been shadowing a real estate agent, and I've learned a lot so far. My daily activities include driving to different houses and finding out whether or not renting or selling. I update the company's blog, I analyze competitors' social media and compare ours, and I photograph houses for listing. I've learned a lot so far. I further understand a lot more of the aspects of real estate, such as mortgages, how we advertise, commission, sales techniques, and more to people skills.
I'm Bryce Hinton, and I'm doing environmental consultant. I want to do engineering, but this is the closest thing I could find. And they do various environmental things, such as spill recovery, and they do site assessments of property, and they review the history of the property, and they look to see if there's any hazards that need to be cleaned up before the property is purchased. What I've learned, I've learned a variety of things. Like I said, I want to do engineering, and in this line of work, there are engineers, but there's also geologists and environmental scientists. And I've learned that engineers can do a wide range of things. You don't just have to work at NASA. You can work basically in any field, need engineers. And I've learned the ins and outs of the workplace, such as etiquette, being on time, and just general etiquette.
I'm Leslie Spate, and I've been shadowing a veterinarian at the Pecosin Veterinary Hospital. I've got to see a lot of dogs get their teeth cleaned.
Excuse me, Leslie. I've got to see a lot of dogs get their teeth cleaned, which is a really common thing. I've also got to see a dog get spayed, which is really cool, and it was the first time I've ever experienced anything like that. I actually got to be in the room and be up and close and, like, personal and get to see everything that was happening. A lot of times, I just hang out with the veterinarian assistants, and they do a lot of preparing the animal for the doctors, such as medication, ear cleanings, toenail clippings. A lot of things I was surprised at was how much time the veterinarians actually spend at their desks, making phone calls, doing prescriptions, getting back with other clients, how much they just know off the top of their head, and the knowledge that they have, and just from symptoms that animals have, they can pretty much tell what they have, and how many different odors animals can actually have. I've made a lot of friends and gotten really close to the people there. I've learned a lot of things, such as, maybe I don't want to go into this specific veterinarian science area. I think I want to specialize in something more like large mammal dentistry and work in a more active environment, such as a zoo or more of like a farm area.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Menino, and I should be a wedding planner and shadow for her. I was a marketing student for two years, and I'm in the club DECA, so I wanted to do something in that field, but I was not sure what. And then, when I started researching more jobs, I discovered wedding planning and how marketing can influence that a lot. I work for, I shadow for, two companies that are trying to help each other out, because they are both small businesses. One is Cherry Blossom Weddings, and the other is Silver and Lace Weddings by Stephanie This task at hand for wedding planners is to schedule and plan a lot of the wedding down to the last minute of it, and that takes a lot of time, working with the bride, working with the groom. And we do set up and take down. These pictures are actually of a wedding that I helped set up in the fall. And wedding planners run the ceremony a lot, and they help out with the bride and anything that she needs. These are more pictures from that wedding that I set up, or helped set up, and I have discovered that I don't want to be a wedding planner, per se, but I do want to work in the field of marketing still.
Hi, my name is Kayla Zoldork, and I'm currently job shadowing a veterinary science teacher at New Horizons. And here, I basically demonstrate basic grooming skills and handling of the pets. As for here, they are grooming, giving baths, and they're blow drying a dog. And then, here, you do a basic restraint, lateral, for clipping the toenails or drawing blood, which we don't do in the class, but we practice it on stuffed animal dogs, so it does give the students a learning option. And what I've learned from this is, I'm not going to be in the field of teaching, because that's just not my thing, but I'd rather be in, like, a large animal medicine.
Hi, I'm Kate Lombardi, and I have been shadowing a CRNA, also known as a Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist. I have been shadowing at Centerra Careplex, and been shadowing a team of nurse anesthetists. I work, or CRNAs work alongside anesthesiologists, surgeons, and other medical professionals to deliver anesthesia for medical and surgical procedures. This is a typical anesthesia machine you would find in an operating room. And a few of the surgeries I have been able to witness are knee replacement, Achilles tendon surgery, shoulder muscle biopsy, and a variety of hip knee and shoulder surgeries. And through this experience, I have learned that it is easier to work with children over than, or rather than adults, and that I would like to be a CRNA, but in a children's hospital.
Hi, my name is Blair Silver, and I have been exploring physical therapy, speech therapy, and occupational therapy. My experience with the class has been a little different, because I have been traveling to two job sites and mentoring, or shadowing two mentors. My first job site was at a nursing home, where I have been exploring these three therapies. I have been able to witness some pretty amazing things here. I have seen a patient's first steps after a hip replacement, or heard of the patient's first words after suffering a stroke. So sometimes I leave here thinking I've witnessed miracles, but I know it's just me seeing those therapists do their jobs, and to me, that is so intriguing. And this exposure has helped me narrow down which therapy I'd like to pursue in college, and that is physical therapy. This brings me to my second job site, which is at Centerra Physical Therapy Center, where I have been shadowing a physical therapist, and I have actually been able to observe and assist in her sessions. And I have seen a wide variety of injuries and treatments, ranging from rotator cuffs and cervical injuries to vestibular treatment and lymphedema treatment, which sounds like a foreign language, I realize, but my point is that through this program, I have been exposed to a wide variety of injuries and treatments, and it has really given me a concrete feeling that this is what career I'd like to pursue in college, and I am so grateful for the class and the opportunities it has given me.
We'd like to close with a quote by Aristotle. For the things we have to learn before we can do them, we learn by doing them. And that's basically what experiential learning is. Thank you for your time.
Students, we're going to take a break here in just a second, so that we can come talk with you some more about your experiences in your course. And what was intriguing to me, I love the fact that Ms. Silver, that you went in there and you're like, yes, this is exactly what I want to do. But also, was it, let's see, it was Kirsten, said, I do not want to do this. But that's important to figure out, too, before you go off and shuck a lot of money over to a college and realize, hey, I made a mistake. So it's a great experience, whether you realize this is exactly what I want to do, or, hey, not exactly what I want to do. Okay? It sounds very good. Mr. Nieves, thank you very much, sir, for your work. And we'll take a break, so we can come talk with you some more.
They did a nice job.
Okay, do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We have none.
And there are no recognitions. So next up is presentations and reports, and we'll hear from Mr. Bowen with financial update first.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. I'm going to step back from budget this evening. The superintendent will be briefing the board on the budget in the work session that follows. So for my finance update this evening, I want to present to you and the community a number of efficiencies that PCPS has undertaken in addressing the strategic plan. Goal number six of the strategic plan is fiscal responsibility. And one of the performance indicators is that PCPS will engage in efficient business practices. This is something that we examine throughout the year, but it's often the budget process itself that brings staff together and will really examine all of our areas of operations and business practices. So this is timely that we talk about this. Let me begin with our current efficiencies. And these actions have been taken place for longer than a year. Maintenance and technology work order system. This replaced an email notification system with very little structure. The system that we have in place has been in place for several years. And what it does is allows an employee to enter a work order for either maintenance or IT electronically. And the system identifies the person that who's submitting the order. It also identifies the specific problem, the building and the room number where the maintenance or IT work is required, and the time needed for completion. This allows maintenance and IT to prioritize their work. It tracks a number of work orders that are issued and also tracks how long to complete a work order. Our telephone notification system, this has allowed for more efficient communication within the school division and with our community. The schools use this system to notify parents of events like back-to-school night and for field trips. The school board uses this system to notify parents of delays and school cancellations. And it also assists in notifying parents of transportation delays. We've had on a number of occasions where emergency vehicles have been on a call and have blocked certain roads and has prevented the school bus from getting to those residents beyond that accident or medical emergency. So in those cases, we've had to bring those schools back to the schools. And once Mr. Papas's staff is alerted of that, then he can pull the telephone numbers for those parents beyond that stretch of road, and a phone call can be directed just to those parents. Our transportation routing software, this system maps the address of every student in the school system. And in doing so, the software allows the transportation staff to determine the most efficient bus routes. The system can be updated immediately to account for those address changes as a result of new or departing students, or simply those moving within the city. So the system is updated immediately and enables us to track those changes rather quickly. Online training modules, these are professionally-developed online training modules that cover a multitude of topics. These are succinct, self-directed modules and usually run for about 30 minutes or so, and usually include some type of quiz or test at the end. Some of the topics that we've used are the bloodborne pathogens, which is a requirement for all of our teachers, playground safety, and also harassment training. So this, using this system, we're able to pull from professionally-developed training modules, and it saves staff from having to develop these modules and conduct training themselves. This is one of my favorites that we've done, is this is the leave management and substitute finder. This replaced a manual process for leave management. So we had forms and duplicate and triplicate that would be submitted by the employee to a supervisor. It would go back to the employee. A copy would come up to the school board office. It was a mess. When we instituted this system, it allows for employees to enter leave online. Once they submit it, it goes directly to their supervisor via email. The supervisor can approve or disapprove that leave. For employees that require a substitute, like a teacher or a parent educator, once that leave has been finalized, final action taken, then the system actually goes out and finds a substitute immediately. It will do it by email and also by phone call. The emails go out immediately. Phone calls begin at 5:30 in the morning and cease at 9:30 at night. So. And what we found, our experience has found that about 85% to 90% of our substitute jobs have been secured by email. Our voice-over IP, or VoIP, this has replaced a traditional telephone system. So now most of our telephone traffic is carried over the Internet. PCPS still mains a few landlines for emergency purposes. This system, once installed, saved the school division over $40,000 a year. And one of the really nice features of VoIP is a lot of things it can do, but it interfaces with our Outlook and email system. So if I had scheduled a meeting at 2:00, and I had entered that in my Outlook, that meeting on my phone, it changes to in an office or in a meeting on my phone. And then when the meeting is over, it changes back to a standard call. So I don't have to personally address the phone to change it, that it, you know, hold all calls. It does it through Outlook. Now, some of our newest operational efficiencies, radio communications. This was deployed at the beginning of this school year. And through the use of various grant funds, we were able to replace push-to-talk communication system with police-grade radios. And what we've found is that the communications are more reliable. And in transportation, for example, problem solving has been expedited. Mr. Papas shared with me an example. If a school bus breaks down, the driver can broadcast the message over the radio. And in doing so, the schools are alerted, Mr. Papas is alerted, and other bus drivers are alerted immediately. And then they can begin to coordinate transporting those children that are either on the bus or still need to be picked up to the schools. And lastly, we have a time clock management system. Under the Fair Labor Standards Act, employers are required to have some system in place to track the hours worked for non-exempt employees. Now, we currently track these hours with pen and paper. Not very efficient. However, this online system will enable non-exempt employees to clock in and clock out using their computer, or using a kiosk that will have strategically placed through the schools with their identification badge. And this system will track all this information, and it will also generate reports of the time worked. The system is currently being tested in the school board office, and we've had very good success. Our plan is to introduce this to the school-based clerical next month, and then to roll it out to all non-exempt employees at the beginning of next school year. So as you can see, PCPS has undertaken numerous efficiencies the past seven years, but this process doesn't end. We continue to examine all areas of operations to ensure that staff time and financial resources are being utilized in the most efficient and effective means possible. And this concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Anybody have questions, comments there?
Is there anything that you'd like to accomplish next that kind of completes this out? It's something that we're looking at.
I would say there's nothing really on the table that we are looking at right at this time. Of course, we're just early in the budget process. So we've, today was our deadline for principals to turn in their budget, for their budget tool, and then we'll begin to evaluate their recommendations and suggestions over the next coming weeks. And then the executive management team will also be meeting to examine their own recommendations.
Anybody else? Thanks, sir. And next up, operations update with Mr. Papas.
Good evening, school board, Chairman Carter, Dr. Parrish. In the area of transportation, we're about to conduct the second of our two required annual in-services. That'll take place this Friday. A large portion of that meeting will be taken up reviewing defensive driving training and going over various training modules with the entire bus staff. This will enable us to retain the 5% reduction that we garnered last year from our participation in Where the Rubber Meets the Road. Our insurance company will continue to give us that 5% discount by completing that driver training. In the area of planned operations, over the recess, the Procoson Fire Department, in conjunction with the Maintenance Department, went through every one of our schools to do the annual fire inspection. Also, the Maintenance Department spent a considerable amount of time doing preventive maintenance during that same break on especially large pieces of equipment whereby we needed to do that when faculty and students were not in the building. In the area of security, pursuant to Virginia Code 22.1-137.2, all schools in Virginia are required to do two lockdown drills each year. Those must be done within the first 30 days of September and the first 30 days in January. All of our schools will be complete by the end of this month. The Procoson Police Department participates in those lockdown drills with us. And at the culmination of each drill, the school administration, the observers, the police, sit down, and we review our findings. And we're able to constantly try to improve. This drill was our unannounced drill. And all of these drills will be completed by the end of the month. In the area of food service, next week, we commence the onsite portion of our federal food service review. In the past, I had mentioned that we had done our off-site review, and we did not receive any comments on that, at least prior to, which I think is a good sign. But when they do arrive next week for the onsite visit, they will be going over and scrutinizing our compliance with all USDA guidelines, our menus, our production sheets, the food that we buy, the quantities, the labeling for compliance. And then we'll have an exit interview with them, and we'll find out how we did. And that concludes the operations report.
Thank you. Questions, comments there? Thank you very much, sir. And Dr. Colley with the instructional update.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, members of the board, Dr. Parrish. My update this evening is a continuation of last week's, or last month's work sessions, and that's on the Program of Studies and the Division's Bring Your Own Technology Initiative. As I mentioned last month, at the beginning of the school year, we start on Program of Studies, pretty much as soon as school gets started, with the middle school staff, the high school staff, coming together and looking carefully at our offerings. Last month, we presented to you in detail the changes and modifications to the Program of Studies at the work session. I'd like to go over those this evening, and then later on, we will bring forward that complete Program of Studies for your approval this evening. So at the middle school, we'll let them drive, okay. At the middle school, Introduction to World Cultures has been expanded to eighth grade. And for foreign languages, world languages, Spanish I will not be offered for Grade Six students beginning this fall. We've created instead three sequences for middle school students to receive up to two high school credits of Spanish. They will either begin with Spanish I Part One in sixth grade, and Spanish I Part Two in seventh grade to get one credit, and then take Spanish II in grade eight to get another high school credit. Or they'll just start Spanish I in seventh grade, Spanish II in eighth grade, and still have the two high school credits. Or they may just opt to take Spanish I in eighth grade to leave middle school with one high school credit. At the high school, we've added several new courses, the first being AP Physics II. This is following along with the College Board's changes to the AP Physics program. We're adding AP Spanish Literature and Culture. We are completing our Teacher Cadet program by offering Teacher Cadet II for those students who want to explore teaching as a career further in that class. And we are also breaking Algebra I into Algebra I Part One and Algebra I Part Two. We also had a technical revision to the Program of Studies this year, and that was a name change for Introduction to Fashion Design and Marketing. The name was changed to Introduction to Fashion Careers. Last month, Dr. Cataldo provided an in-depth presentation of our Division's Bring Your Own Technology Initiative at the high school. And tonight, I want to briefly share our progress and plans for moving forward. As he mentioned last month, he chairs and directs the work of a committee that is comprised of teachers, administrators, technology, and school board office staff. To date, five of our teachers, five of our teachers have piloted, have piloted the initiative this semester. And the ITRTs, along with those pilot teachers, will be sharing with the staff over the course of the next few weeks to provide some professional development and guidance as the school begins school-wide implementation second semester. So our high school parents should be looking for information coming home in the form of an information letter, more facts, frequently asked questions about the program as we move into this exciting initiative. As we look ahead to 2015-16, of course, we want to expand the implementation in our other schools, looking first to the middle school and then to the elementary school, and recognizing all the while that this is going to look different at the middle school and may look even different still at the elementary school when we implement something like this with much younger students. This will be done through ongoing and expanded committee meetings, communication, professional development, and assessing where we are and how we're going. And that concludes my instructional update for this evening.
All right. Questions, comments there?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cass, could you take us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes, the consent agenda tonight contains the following items, A through E. All of these have been enclosed in the board packet. Approval of minutes of December regular meeting, approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, authorization to dispose of surplus property, authorization to change appropriation in accordance with attached request.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
And can we call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Other matters for consideration. First, approval of minutes of joint school board and city council meeting, which was enclosed. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
And Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero.
And then the approval of minutes of the December work session, which was enclosed. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
A motion, we approve the December work minutes.
And the second?
Second.
Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Abstaining.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passed four, one abstention.
Thank you. Consideration of approval of second reading of Changed Policy Manual, Section 7-2.3, Student Attendance and Absences True and See, and there's a reading file. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought this to you in December for first reading, and this is making sure that we align our practices with policy. So what we are asking to have done tonight is your approval to remove the references to makeup work from your actual policy, because in the student handbook and code of conduct that the students receive each year, it outlines our makeup work policy or practice. And you, as a board, approve that before we put that handbook into place each year. So you will still be approving your makeup work policy, but because we do update that handbook every year, we thought that was the place to have it outlined. So with that said, I'm recommending approval of the changes to the policy tonight.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions or comments there? Discussion. All right. Thank you. Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. Next up, consideration of approval of the 2015-16 Secondary Program of Studies with the reading file enclosed. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I think that Dr. Colley did a wonderful job this evening of outlining the changes that we're bringing forward to the Program of Studies. And as she mentioned, you did have discussion about that at your work session in December. So with that said, I recommend approval of the 15-16 Secondary Program of Studies.
And do I have a motion to approve?
A motion, we approve the secondary programs of studies.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there?
My comment would be, I would like to thank the teachers and department chairs, principals for working hard to bring those changes forward. The changes such as these are never easy, and they're done thoughtfully and with a lot of purpose. I appreciate all that helped provide those.
Ditto that. Thank you. Anybody else? Could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero.
And next up, consideration of approval of Procoson Elementary School Title I Parent Involvement Policy. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, as required by federal law, our elementary school, because it is a Title I school, so it is receiving federal funds, has to enact a parent involvement policy. So what you have attached to your reading file is a copy of that policy. We did have involvement from the community and parents developing that. Please note that we also have a division-wide parental involvement policy that you approved when you actually approved the application in the summer that's attached to the No Child Left Behind Act. So this is one technically just for the elementary school. This did come to you as a reading file, and at this time, I recommend you approve the PES Title I Parent Involvement Policy.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions, comments here? Anything? All right. Ms. Reimers, you're up again.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero.
Next is consideration of approval of Proclamation of National School Counselors Week. And we all know that counselors are there to help students reach their full potential, and they are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as they relate to career awareness and development. They help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and they are considered an integral part of the education process. And hats off to the counselors for the work that they do. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
And the second? Any questions, comments there?
Important work.
Yes, it is. Thank you. All right. Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero.
And last up, consideration of approval of request for extended field trip to the Czech Republic. And there was a reading file enclosed there. Dr. Parrish, should I speak to that?
Yes, as you know, and our community is probably well aware, we continue our partnership with the high school from the Czech Republic, and we had those, the students coming from that school to us this fall. So in the spring, it provides the opportunity for some of our students to go to visit the Czech Republic, and they do stay with the sponsoring families while they're over there. This field trip is scheduled for April 2nd to April 12th, so the students are there. The majority of the time is during our student's spring break, so not missing much of their time here with us at Procoson High School. Partnership continues to be very successful with us. Because it is an extended trip and an overseas trip, we do ask that you approve this field trip. So with that said, I just ask that you do that approval this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions there?
How many do we have going this year? Do we have an idea?
We have at this point, I think, at least seven to 10 students. I think they're still finalizing, working on finalizing those numbers. And we do have chaperones going with those students as well.
Nice. Thank you.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
I do think it's important to note that students do fund this, as we're about to talk about budget. This is not a budget item for this school division, other than we do assist with the chaperones.
Good. Any other questions there? Thank you. Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight?
No, sir, there are none.
Thank you. And Sophie, could you kick off our, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'll start with you, Dr. Parrish. I wasn't going to leave you for last.
It's because you knew that I was going to talk about budget, so you just wanted to go by me.
Just skim right past. If you would please kick us off, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I do want to remind you that we will be talking a little bit about that in the work session. I am also planning on going to all four of the schools tomorrow to provide the same presentation I'll be giving you with our faculty and staff tomorrow. We do know with the governor's budget that at this point, he has proposed not to cut K-12 funding. We will face some reductions nonetheless, so we certainly hope that we don't see the General Assembly make a change to that. The problem with the governor's budget is there's no restoration of the millions of dollars that we've lost over the last five budget cycles. So we continue to talk about that with legislators in Richmond. And just a reminder to the community that our public forum on budget with you all is at 6:00 PM on the 29th of January, right here in Council Chamber. So if anybody would like to provide some comment and input on the budget, it's a great time to do it. But you certainly are welcome to contact any of you all, board members, or me as well, if they have ideas to share. I do want to remind everyone, because we certainly had our first possibility of inclement weather last week, but I was a very happy woman when I was able to send everybody to school on time last week. But just a reminder that we do use the telephone notification system that Mr. Bowen spoke about in his presentation to notify all of our families if we are going to delay or cancel school due to inclement weather. And we do our very best to make sure that those calls-
And we do our very best to make sure that those calls are sent by 6:00 AM in the morning. So if you haven't heard from us, you just need to assume that you need to get up on time and come on into school. We do post the information on our website and also we do put it on call into the local TV stations. But again, we make that decision by around 6:00 AM in the morning. So my fingers crossed, we don't have any more inclement weather, although I know there are some students who have certainly let me know that they're looking for some inclement weather, so. And also just a reminder to everyone that our high schools and students in our high school courses and the middle schools are taking exams this week. So they're probably busy at home studying each of these evenings. Thank you.
Thank you. Now you may go, Sophie.
Okay. At the primary school, students and teachers have enjoyed a long winter break and are now back into their routines. As the semester closes, the teachers have been busy assessing students, reviewing the results, regrouping students, and planning for their instruction. Last week, all staff and students participated in an unannounced lockdown drill. Mr. Pappas and the Pecosin Police Department assisted in conducting the drill. Students and staff did a fantastic job responding to the drill. The next few weeks are full with school and community activities. Family Math Night is next week. Jump Rope for Heart, the Senior Social, and Science Night are also scheduled in the next few weeks. At the middle school, 18-week tests are currently being administered. Check online or with your students for testing dates. Eighth graders will meet with the high school counselors on January 27th to go over scheduling. There is a Rising Freshman Parents/Student Night and Electives Fair for current eighth graders and their parents on Wednesday, January 28th, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the high school auditorium. Parents of current fifth graders are invited to the middle school on Tuesday, February 3rd, at 6:00 for a meeting to discuss scheduling for rising sixth graders. Family Book Fair Night will be February 18th. And at the high school, midterm exams are taking place this week. 18 students made all-district band, which was the third most in the district. Of these 18 students, four of them will be trying out for the All-Virginia Band. Registration for AP testing begins on February 2nd. And as for our sports and swimming, the boys' swim team currently has a 1-5 record. The girls' swim team has a 0-6 record and two swimmers qualified to swim in the Kick It Tan Invitational. In basketball, the boys' basketball team currently has a 1-13 record. The girls' basketball team currently has a 10-2 record and is actually currently first in the district. And the wrestling team currently has a 15-5 record. The team placed four in the Amherst County Classic Tournament, first in the Colin E. Baker Tournament at Great Bridge, and first in the Charger Jewels at Chantilly. In indoor track, the girls' team has placed ninth and eighth in two meets. The boys' indoor track team has placed sixth and ninth in two meets. And our Scholastic Bowl has finished second in Bay Rivers District Regular Season and second in the Conference 25 Tournament. That's all.
Wow, thank you very much. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Dr. Carter. No comment tonight.
Okay, Ms. Sidner?
I would just like to thank the students who presented earlier, speaking with them on the break. They were all very excited about what they were doing and I think it's an excellent program. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, Mr. Melton.
I'm going to second Robyn's remarks. I really enjoyed the program, Do Not Quit, followed by Being What You Want to Be, and it kind of dove right into the experiential learning thing. It was a nice, nice set of three there. And I would say it was a good decision. We had safe roads by about three degrees. It might have been some black ice, but it was nothing and it was a good decision, Dr. Parrish. So we got a good day of education in. That's all.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Cass? Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I would also like to comment on the student presentations tonight, from the pledge to the inspirational reading to the experiential learning class was very good. It was, I'm glad to know that we still have the resources to put something like that in place for students to get them out and just have that experience in the real world is hugely beneficial. So, and I hope they will remember that for a long time and they will use it to make good career choices.